Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Von Rudenbord?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canis Dino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Councilman Bataglia?
Yeah.
Mayor LaBras?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cec, notice having been published according to law with copy on file in the clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll turn it right over to the city manager.
We're gonna have training on that. Just hold that, hand that to that gentleman here.
Okay.
Hello, hello.
How are you, Mr. Gome?
I'm good, thank you, how are you? Um, okay, so, um, I, I wanna make some clarifications so that everyone's on the same page, because I think there's some discrepancies. I live in, at 130 Overlook Avenue in Hackensack, and, um, this Sanzari building has twenty floors, and it does have underground parking, which I have two spots, because I have a wheelchair van, and my ramp comes out to the right, so one parking spot is not sufficient. In the back of the building, there is a handicap parking spot which I cannot use, because it is right next to another place, and I can't get my ramp out. I live by myself, and one of the reasons why I need a spot outside the building is, outside my building, is so I can go to my apartment and live independently, which is the core factor of the ADA. Currently, the only way I could've done it without this handicap parking spot is to go into the garage, park my car, and then take my, my groceries out, and the way it is, is the ramp comes down, so if I've got groceries on my chair, the groceries would fall off, if you get my meaning, so there's a special lane, that's why I need to have a buil- a site outside, so I can put my ramp out on the curb. And once I get that, I have to go to the elevator, and there's a ramp to go up, and whenever I carry my groceries, they fall off. So the only logical way for me to live independently is to park, have a parking spot outside my building, and when I have it outside my building, the ramp comes out, and it comes out flat to the curb, so I, I have an easy transition, therefore, this helps me lead an independent life. Now, um, I don't know your name, sir, but you seem to indicate that you go there every day, and you haven't come across anyone who's parked in that spot. Well, I can show you, um, on YouTube, if you'd like to watch it. CBS came out from New York and did an article on illegal handicap parking, and within ten minutes, and it's here, you can look at YouTube, and I'll show it to you if you need, within ten minutes, there were two people who had no parking privileges parked there. So I don't know what time you go, maybe you go in the morning, at midnight, I don't know, but during the day, when I've gone there, and I've got plenty of pictures here that I can prove, because I, what I do do is I take these pictures, and I send them to Hackensack Police for them to pursue. There's cars that have been abandoned, and I've got proof of it, because I've taken pictures of it. So when you say there's none, you're totally wrong. There may be none when you go past, because that may be a certain time, but when I want it, there seems to be few, and the problem is, that what happens is, and this is a fact, a fact, um, in New Jersey, there's 6.5 million cars that are registered, and 650,000 somehow seem to have handicap parking privileges, so that's one in ten, and I can totally assure you that those one in ten categorically do not fall into the six very strict guidelines under the ADA. So it's total abuse, and one of the, um, best departments in the state of New Jersey is Hackensack, and I'm very sorry to hear that Sergeant O'Connor's leaving. I believe Hackensack issued 500 handicap violations last year, which is probably like ten times more than others, because people don't take this seriously. Under the ADA, I have the same right as the average person to have access. If your argument, sir, is that you don't see any car, then you shouldn't have any street parking for able-bodied people, so how come you have street parking for able-bodied people and not for disabled people? And the reason why that was put into effect under the ADA was to help people like me. And my problem is, because, and I think you mentioned when I was here last time, I'm sorry, I, I can't read your name, so, um, we, you know, we live in a, a city, you know, Hackensack, which is, which has a lot of doctors, and a lot of disabled people and disabled usage, but my argument is, if that spot, which I'm entitled to, was designated for me, I should have the ability to use that spot, and not for an employee who works at Hackensack, who walks to work and comes back, I've seen it, park their car there. And other cities, like, um, Clifton, Patterson, have the, the disabled, uh, plaque, and they have the sign, and they have a car registered to that spot. And all I'm asking is, that, um, under the ordinance that Hackensack currently has, is for the car to be registered to that spot. If the argument is that, you know, the police don't have time, well, let me just tell you something, the police in Hackensack, through proper enforcement of the law, and I have gone to the Attorney General in New, New Jersey, Attorney General Finkel, and I've, and we have agreed that under Title 39, it is not as discretionary as police has made it out. There's no problem in Hackensack, so, you know, I mean, everywhere else, there's this mysterious word of discretion. Hackensack have done an excellent job, and if the problem is, they won't have time, well, let me just tell you something, Hackensack Police Traffic Department have brought into this city, at the very least, $200,000 in fines, because if they've issued 500 tickets at 250 on Title 39, there's also your, your laws, your, um, Hackensack ordinances, which issue higher fines, so it's a money giver for you. You gain money from it, by enforcing it. And for me, if you, you know, if I wanna be leading an independent life, I want to have the ability to do my own grocery shopping, and take that grocery shopping, without being dependent on anyone else, into my apartment. And also, you know, on a very personal note, and this is very serious, actually, and, and I can't stress this enough, but every single one of you here who's not in a wheelchair, when you get up in the morning, you have reasonable expectation to use a restroom, don't you? Because you know with the probability you can park your car outside. Well, that's, that right has to be granted to me, with a reasonable expectation, and to me, if I have someone who's parked in front of my building, in my spot by someone else, that I don't have that reasonable expectation. And, well, all I'm asking is, that we, there's an ordinance put into place, that the spot that was designed for the, given to that disabled person, has the plate on it. So I'm open to questions.
I have a question.
I have a question. I have some questions.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but did you say that you also have ha- two spaces, handicap spaces, in your build, in your garage?
Right, but that's, yes, but that's-
So why can't your argument be with the owner of your building, that if these are handicap spots that are provided specifically for you, and you must pay a certain amount of mon- money to have these spots, explain to him what the reason is that you can't use those spots, because perhaps they weren't, let me finish, perhaps they weren't designed properly, or maybe there needs to be an adjustment-
It's not a matter of design.
There.
Here's the problem, if I can explain, no elevator, okay, when it's a garage, it has to have a platform, okay? And when it has a platform, all right, I have to have a ramp to get up it. And when I get my groceries, when I ha- when I do my shopping, that, when I go to Rite Aid, they bring the shopping into my car, okay? It's not just a matter of shopping, it's other issues, like, I may want to go into my apartment for five minutes, okay? Like you, if you had, if you, if you had act, if you lived in my building, and you wanted to go into your apartment, you know, you have the right to park in the street, but I should, I'm entitled to that right. And the fact, it's not a matter of the, um, manage, the owner of the building, which is Sanzari, is a, it, because he can't change the fact that there's, there has to be, by law, because it's downstairs, so it doesn't get flooded, okay? A big step, and for me to get up that step, there's a ramp.
Right, but these, these parking spots are designed specifically for handicap access, and my personal opinion is, if you have that spot, you're, you're paying a certain amount of money for that spot. To me, your argument should not be with the city, but should be with the person who's-
No, no-
Well, you're, you're, I'm just expressing my opinion, that your argument should be the folks that are providing the spot to you, at a cost to you, and why maybe come out with an amenable way for you to work with them to have that function. That's just my, my opinion, I'll let you answer.
But there is no amenable way, because when I get to my apartment, I have to open my window, put the car key in, go down the ramp, turn the car around, and it's right at the other end, so I can get two spots, okay? Once I come out of that, the landlord can't do anything, and besides which, my argument is not that at all, because the ar- the whole purpose of having a handicap spot is for me, under the ADA, okay, to have reasonable access. And to me, reasonable access is the same as you living in my building, and being able to park, like everyone else does, out on the street, and get inside within one minute. For me to currently go through that process-
Excuse me, sir, but there's, there's no way that there's parking on the street for everyone that's in the building, that, that's-
No, I'm not saying that, you have the choice, that's what I'm saying, I don't have that choice. You have the choice, if you want to-
Everyone has that choice if there's a parking spot available, and I think there is a handicap spot in front of your building, and if that spot's available, you have that choice, but if that spot is not available, you have two spots that were designed specifically for handicapped use, that is within your building, so to me, that's where the, that's where the problem arises.
Okay, I mean, forget me, I think the problem is, that, that if the intent of that spot is for the person who is handicapped to have that spot, okay, then it should be for that person, like it is in Patterson-
But that's, but it isn't designated for that person, it's designated for anyone
What, how is-
In the city that has the, that has been designated as a handicapped individual that may need to use that spot to park. It has not been designated for one individual, it's designated for any-
That's, that's my point.
Right, and, and that's our point as well, sir, and that's how we designate our spots throughout the city, that there's certain amount of handicap parking spots on street that are not for specific individuals, but are for anyone who has the need to use that particular spot. So by designating that spot for a particular individual, we now are taking that availability away to many others that may need it for that one, that's the issue.
So why don't you have a handicap spot in every single street in Hackensack?
For whatever want to use it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, quite a li-
Why don't you do it? Why don't you have one spot on every street for a handicapped person to park their car?
Well, they are, uh-
No, there's not.
Quite a few handicap spots-
I know, but not every street has it.
No, not every street doesn't, but what, since this, since this council has been here, we have probably seen, I've seen at least fifty to a hundred spots come in front of us that are either approved or denied, um, based on, on probably some of the reasons you stated, people getting spots, and, and I know, and I also wanna go back and, and talk about if, in, to your point, Hackensack Police have done a great job, I can't tell you how many, I think I counted last week, I can't remember what the number was, handicap placards that were illegal, all right, that had been confiscated in the city of Hackensack, but a couple other points I wanna make, and I will agree to some point with what the deputy mayor said, new development goes up, all the renters pay for a parking spot as part of their rent or extra, all right, but that does not guarantee them a spot outside, if there's no spot available, only if there's a spot available.
I agree, I agree.
Now, my concern is, you know, being handicapped certainly is, is a problem, I understand that, but what if somebody else can't ever use that spot now, who's handicapped? What do we do? Now, they're, they're, they'd never have the opportunity to use that spot, so that, that raises an issue, but, and the other thing I wanna know, and I don't know if we've done our homework on this yet, I know you were here, uh, several months ago, um, I think we had asked, we were gonna check with other municipalities, can you designate one spot for one person and not do it for everybody throughout the whole city? Is it discretionary upon the council to do that?
Can I answer that, actually?
If you do that for one person, anybody would-
That's my question.
No, no, my, can I answer that? Certain, 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 um, towns have that, Clifton and Patterson.
I have, I've, uh, I've, I've, I think I mentioned this last time this issue came up, but I am familiar with the concept of handicap parking spots being reserved for particular license plates. In fact, in my town where I live, um, that is, uh, the practice for certain handicap spots, um, I live in, in Hoboken, which has an extreme parking program, and you have streets where there's no, you know, streets of brownstones, you're familiar with the town-
Right.
-that have no resident parking whatsoever, and, and in that case, they have a committee that goes through it and, and reviews the circumstances, it's limited to, I think, one or two spots per block, and if you're the first in, then it's yours until such time as you, you know, leave that residence. Um, so it does exist, I have not seen or am I aware of any legal challenges to that, but again, you know, that is, um, you know, something that if you open the door to it, the, the trick is always, who qualifies, how do they qualify? I mean, if there's space available in a building, um, that might be something that I would suspect they would look at in, in, in Hoboken and say, well, if, if you have some opportunity to have a, a handicap parking, handicap parking spot in your building, then you might not qualify. I mean, I can certainly get the council the exact rules for how you qualify in that town, and a couple of the other towns that are mentioned, if the council wishes to explore this further. Um, I, I think, rather than really a legal issue, aside from how it's done, it's a question of, you know, is, is this something you wanna do? It's not particularly common, but it does, it does exist, I have seen it, I have experienced it.
Okay, can you get that information to us, and then we can look into it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so-
Can I just add something to this? I think we're missing the whole point here, okay? The point is, is a matter of being independent, okay? And why I need a spot on the street? For me, to get my shopping, if I wanna go to my apartment, takes me literally three minutes, okay? And like, if any of you wanted to park on the street and there was a parking spot, it would take you three minutes to get to your apartment, okay? But the other challenge is, I have to go down, and I can't carry my shopping, okay? There's no, nothing I can do, and I can't, I don't have the liberty by parking downstairs to get into my apartment within three minutes. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, I don't, you know, you have the choice to park in Overlook Avenue as an individual with no restriction, and I should have that choice as well, if I'm to lead an independent life, it's not up to, I mean, obviously, if there was parking, and that was looked at in the back of the building, which is really close to the entrance, okay, then I'd have no argument, but there isn't, because I can't get my ramp out. The only sufficient and adequate way of me to do this is to park it outside and get my ramp out of my car, onto the pavement, go out, get into my apartment. So if you, you know, the, the, the point I'm trying to make in essence is, the liberty that's afforded to able-bodied people to be able to park on the street should be afforded to disabled people, and more so in the sense, because we have greater challenges to get in and out of buildings. And so, unless you want me, you know, when I do my shopping, call the police and say, hey, excuse me, can you take my shopping upstairs, because there's no one who can take it? And currently, that's, that's my choice.
There's nothing that Sanzari can do about changing, making new locations, even if it costs them some money? He's, he's renting a build, he's renting a spot in his building to somebody with a handicap, and to me, he should be responsible for providing you access into that building without an issue.
The question is not access, sir, I have access, I'm not denying that, okay? I'm denying the, the ability to have immediate access and to make my life easier. There's an elevator in the building where the garage is, okay? So for me to actually maneuver my, my shopping, for example, or carry anything, I have to balance it on my wheelchair, and for me to balance it on my wheelchair and take five minutes to get from my car to my apartment, okay, I sometimes drop things, whereas if I have a parking spot in front of my building, okay, I get my ramp out, and by getting my ramp out, I go out and get into the front of the building and go into your apartment, myself.
In a way, then the store, before you go out, they can secure all your items to prevent that to fall down?
I'm sorry?
In a way, they can secure, in the store, before you go out, and pack your stuff with a zipper or something, that way nothing gonna fall down.
No, because they're bags.
No, no, they, you can bring your own bag with a zipper, and that way the store go inside-
No, I can't carry that.
Huh?
I can't carry that.
But they can secure to the chair in the back or something.
I've seen, I've seen some doormen in that, in that building, I know him pretty well, and that doorman will help you every second time.
Right, my friend, let me ask you a question, okay? We're not, we're talking about independence, okay? We're not talking about someone else giving you a hand, the whole fight is for disabled people to integrate into society and live an integrated life, not to be dependent on others.
We understand that, but what happened, if, if we're gonna personalize the space-
Right.
-for you-
Right.
Tomorrow, we're gonna be another person, another person, how we gonna get out?
Well, I have a simple solution for that.
Okay?
So why don't you put into the, if you do pass an ordinance, at the request of the disabled person?
But they will all do that.
We don't wanna be here the whole night, so can you look into the legality of this, and then we come back to you.
We're gonna have him go over, because we're-
Yeah, they go, he go over, and then we, we see what we can do. Because we try to help you, but we don't wanna open Pandora's box.
And I, I was just taking a look while we were talking, I mean, you know, certainly in, in Hoboken, just so you're aware, how they do it, um, you know, they actually have a subcommittee that reviews it, and it's quite, you know, I'm just looking at the process, it's quite extensive, I mean, you know, potentially requiring review of medical records, potentially a doctor's examination to make sure it's legitimate, and then each and every location that they do it, they do it by ordinance, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's something that legislatively would have to be done, so it would be a particular, you know, each time, if the committee would recommend it, it would go to the council for a discussion.
So can you look into that, then you let us know?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put together how they do it, how it works-
Okay, thank you.
And then you can decide if that's something-
I'd be grateful if you did that, because I can assure this committee, okay, that if one in ten vehicles have handicap parking, then I strongly would recommend that each person has a handicap parking spot designated to them, should go through that, because I can assure you-
That's not gonna work, Mr. Gome, because some blocks, you have people with several handicap spot, heavy handicap people who, and there's only one handicap spot, and we can't designate a handicap spot for every handicapped person in the city, it would be physically impossible to do. Um, that said, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is, if your spot in the, double spot in the building's empty, and your truck is parked outside, and somebody else with a handicap needs that spot, to me, that's unfair, that your van is outside, you have two spots inside, and that person who would like some independence now is stuck in your predicament. So, you know, by solving a problem or creating a problem for somebody else who might be-
So we're gonna look into that, see?
That spot is not designated to handicapped people, it's designated to-
Okay, so we're gonna look into, Mr. Gome, and then we're gonna let you know, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, and you'll take that. Okay, Mayor?
Atlantic Street Park.
Yes, sir. Um, the Atlantic Street Park, um, which was developed before my service, um, which originally was a parking lot, they tell me, which turned it into a park-
Correct.
And it's a very beautiful park-
Mm-hmm.
-is now part of the H-PAC Center, so to speak, um, where we're gonna have outdoor concerts and events, and unfortunately, if anybody's taking a trip over there-
It's, go ahead, I wanna be first one to speak on this one.
It, it's disgusting, it's turned into a dog park that we never designated, so my suggestion to the mayor and council is, we remove the green bags and the containers, post it that this is an animal-free zone, and get back to it, because we have people that are gonna bring kids and blankets and events there, and, and it's-
I've been to events where people have actually sat in dog feces, it's totally disgusting, it's totally disregarded by the tenants in that building, um, unfortunately, Meridia has said, how do we know it's from them? The closest apartment building to that place is five blocks away, I doubt the people are walking five blocks to walk their dog down there, it's possible that some are, but I constantly see people coming from that building, walking their dog, taking it right into the middle of the grass, dog goes to bathroom, bags are right there, they don't pick it up, they walk back into their apartment, I've watched it at least a half a dozen times, uh, I do see people pick it up too, but, uh, especially the inside grass, where we do performances, I mean, it's a total disregard for, for, for people's health and everything else, dog feces causes disease, there's signs right there stating that, and, uh, to me, it's a total disregard, and if we started fining these people, a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars a pop every time their dog did this, and they didn't pick it up, I think they might learn real quick, so either we put a fine process in, fence it off, and just tell them, you know, no more dog, and they have a dog run there, by the way, up on the roof.
Right.
So, you know, they're, they're ruining a, a good thing for themselves over there, they got a beautiful park, they're destroying it with their animals, I'm a dog lover, but I would never do that to a park, right?
So I just wanted to get some direction from the mayor and council, do you think-
So remove the two-
Remove that, I don't, we don't even know how that ever originated, that should've never been placed there.
Okay.
So I agree, I mean, and, and maybe let folks know that we are, Steph, you're heading up the effort to have a dog park instead of park, that if they want to let their dogs run and do a constructive way, we're working on that.
I'll, I'll work with Steve.
And I expect to probably have about a hundred Meridian residents here after this, but that's all right.
Yeah. So remove the two-
It's not a dog park.
The two dispenser for the plastic bag.
I'll work with Fred, and I'll-
Make sure you get some signage up the thing, that they will be fined, just for putting the do- dogs on the green, they should, the dogs should not be-
Well, they want, if they wanna do that with their dogs in our park, we'll do our events inside their apartment building and see how they like it, all right? I mean, you gotta be fair here.
I can see, if you help me, and we'll craft an ordinance and, and make that work.
In order, now, because, who, what, what's no order not to put a two dispenser with a plastic bag?
No, but, but if you're gonna make that a, a dog-free zone-
We're gonna find them, we're gonna find them.
And you have some compo- you have some component for enforcement-
Right.
We're gonna have to put an ordinance together with-
And assign-
No, no pun intended, with some teeth in it, that you can actually enforce it.
Yeah, okay.
Pun was kind of intended there, wasn't it, really? Well, a little bit, but tha- that was the setup for the massage ordinance that Steve's gonna talk to you about.
That one-
See, I'll take the teeth one, he can do the massage one.
Did we do this once before?
No.
Massage ordinance, we just talked about it?
No, no, we, we talked, we talked about it to get-
I remember us talking about it.
You know, to get, uh, um, you know, a general sense of what the council wanted to do with this, but ob- obviously, this is a, a pretty extensive ordinance, um, that covers the areas that are not covered by state law and regulation, I mean, we do not have the ability to regulate the licensure of masseuses, but we can ensure that all masseuses have licenses. Um, so what this ordinance would do is, uh, set forth a, a, a pretty robust regulatory scheme, uh, that would, uh, require the health department to, uh, review applications for massage licenses, um, for establishments, would license them, would review them, um, ensure that there's insurance coverage, um, and annually renew each license. Um, one of the iss- one of the things that is in this li- this ordinance is that, um, in order to avoid having too many massage establishments within a particular location, it does establish a, a thousand-feet zone, everything would be grandfathered up till now, but from my discussions with the health officer, uh, we don't believe there's any, uh, there, there are not massage establishments within a thousand feet of another right now. Um, and then, uh, there's certain operating requirements, um, you know, obviously, with respect to the appropriate conduct of massage services, because the goal here is to ensure a service that many people would like to utilize, and is very popular, but as we all know, there have been some- But as we all know, there have been some abuses in this area, which I will not get into. But all of those things are restricted, um, in the ordinance, um, and there'll be, uh, uh, inspections available, there'll be record-keeping requirements. Um, and, um, you know, so as I said, i- i- it pretty much covers what we think as far as we can go in terms of, uh, establishing a regulatory scheme that is something that is not so burdensome, that it will be impossible for legitimate establishments to meet. But by the same token, will hopefully ensure, uh, no abuses and will allow us to get businesses that, you know, service businesses are what bring people to downtowns these days, you know, retail, everybody's buying Amazon. So you wanna have these sort of businesses provided that they are operated, um, in an appropriate manner, and that's what we've tried to do with this, working closely with the health department.
Okay, if I may, you also have to remember, we already have operating massage establishments in the city of Hackensack. So this, you know, gives us some control over them as well. You, Hackensack University Medical Center has one and beyond spa up on the ninth floor, twenty Prospect.
One Riverside Square.
There's Riverside Square, there's one, in the fountain. So this is, you know, regulates them as well. So it's, uh, if they're gonna have it, we need, it needs to be controlled, so.
Okay.
And enforced.
Kind of, and like annual fee to cover a health inspection?
That that's correct, so 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 the initial fee is, I I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars if you already exist. So if you're the fountain, it's two hundred and fifty, but for new establishments, it's five hundred dollars. And then each year, there is a two hundred and fifty dollar fee. Also, there's a fingerprinting requirement, so they pay for that and expenses along those lines, but it's a, it's an annual fee.
Do we health inspect, how many, quarterly or?
Uh, I mean, the inspections are really, uh, i- i- that's up to the health officers to how often.
So it doesn't pull that out in the.
But but it provides that the health, uh, the health inspector can, at any time she believes that there is a need for an inspection, they have the ability to go inspect not only records, but the facilities to make sure they're being run in a clean and sanitary manner, um, that all the licenses are available, so so she really has the discretion as need be to go in as she sees fit.
Okay, next.
Okay.
Okay, number four is the shopping carts throughout the city of Hackensack. Uh, the city has a code, uh, one forty-three dash seven impound recovery disposal of carts. And basically, the, um, summation is that it's fifty dollars per cart retrieval and storage. Um, this has not apparently in prior years really been enforced, but we seem to, uh, start to have a real problem here, because we have shopping carts dumped all over the place. And our DPW goes by with a pickup truck, picks them up, and then we, um, bring them back to the store. And it just that enforcement component has not been in there. So the thought was, if the mayor and council are supportive of that, we'll send out notices to the stores that have carts and and explain saying, of course, the the other piece in my head was that I'm surprised the stores don't come back and say, if they leave those carts within so many feet of the the store property, they should have an enforcement component for them, if the police see them shoving that cart, you know, two miles down River Road, um, maybe they shouldn't be shoving that cart two miles down River Road. But that's, I guess that's for them to decide, but I just wanted to double check before we.
What I would do, I would still have them bring the carts back to DPW. I certainly wouldn't be delivering them back for free, and I would, I would lower the fine. If you want your cart, here it is, come back and get it for such and such, we have ten of your carts at twenty-five dollars a cart, whatever. Uh, and and that's it, otherwise, after a certain amount of time, we're gonna dispose of it.
Now, I think it was the Pasei marker, they used to have a device in the car that have a certain fee, they will don't turn. So that mean you may be allowed to go from the door to the car, they give you seventy-five feet. And after that, they will don't turn. So why the reason we don't give that idea to these places, they can use this kind of device, right? And that way, that will prevent people to take the car all the way to their house.
So is it the?
It's something that even when the guy get a car that maybe was too far away, he got a device that then he unlock the car, because the car lack, have a certain fee, lack. And that will prevent for the guy to go and take the car to the house and then drop it by the path, drop it, whatever.
Target has that, but I think sometimes, I don't know if they fail, because you'll see Target carts all over, I don't know.
I don't know, I saw that work by the Hackensack marker.
All they have to do is have the thing, per- it's a perimeter line around the property, that if it, you know.
Like they have in the malls.
If the cart leaves, it locks itself automatically, but that's, you know, that's up to them. I mean, that's a big expense to do that.
So.
But I, what do you want, you wanna go and storage the cars? Eventually, you're gonna let it out.
Only for a small amount of time, then you dispose of them.
Hmm.
I would only store them for a certain amount of time, then get rid of them. You watch how fast they pick them up.
So do you wanna lower the fee that we currently charge the fifty dollars per cart to another price?
Well, yeah, well, we're not gonna deliver them anymore.
No, 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 I get that.
I mean, I would, I would charge them, I mean, fifty dollars seems like a lot to to for a shopping cart though.
So leave it at fifty?
Maybe if you're delivering, it's not, but we don't have time to be delivering shopping carts back to the supermarkets. They should be coming and get their super, their carts. Yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about the money, I just don't want our guys bringing the carts back, let them come get them.
Yeah, but it may be closer to just bring it back to the store than to take it all the way to DPW.
If you keep it at fifty, it'll make the guys from get.
Yeah, I would leave it at fifty.
Well, then leave it at fifty and let them get them.
But then how you gonna classify, they won't belong to this guy, they won't belong to?
They're all marked, most of them.
They're marked, yeah.
They're marked.
Oh, uh, yeah.
We know where they're from.
Targets or they they have their own little logo on the seats or something, but they're usually very well marked.
Sure is, I don't know if I would prefer to just keep delivering them and just send them bills.
I will do that, I will prefer to do that.
And get rid of them, then you don't have them storing down at DPW.
Well, that was my thought.
Are they, are they, well, they haven't paid.
Yeah, they just send, we send them a bill.
Yeah.
And this is an ordinance?
The DPW, you guys should just keep track of it.
Then bring them back and send them a bill, see what happens.
The current ordinance says the city authorizes the superintendent of the Department of Public Works and the city of Hackensack to remove shopping carts from the streets, avenues, roads, highways. Owners of such shopping carts can retrieve such carts upon payment of the fee in the sum of fifty dollars for retrieval and storage.
See, that's, they can retrieve them after they pay.
The city shall notify the owner of its possession of the carts and has them removed from the streets upon the failure of the owners to pay the above fee and pick up the carts within thirty days. The city may dispose of them as trash and any other means that they deem appropriate without further obligation to the owner of these carts.
You'd have to change the ordinance.
If we delivered them, we'd have to change the ordinance, I think that's what we have to decide what we wanna do.
Right, but I don't see anybody jumping up, especially the stores, that we immediately have to change. What I'm trying to do is, I think we need to start the process that we're going to.
Charge.
Charge, and you folks need to be responsive, and if you're not, we'll fix the ordinance, you're gonna be even more responsive. I mean, i- if you don't hold these people accountable, we're, we're, we get what we currently get, um, non-compliance.
But you can throw the car right by, cross the street from Poly Flight Toward. They got plenty of grants over there.
Okay, um, if that's good, we get to the two thousand and eighteen Hackensack, uh, reassessment letter. Um, are you sure that you wanna?
All right, if you want me to speak about it quickly, um, the assessment led, we we haven't compiled all of the data yet. At this point, we're still in the process of doing so. Everyone should have received their letter. Um, I think the letter is self-explanatory, it tells you what your assessed value was last year, what your current, your assessed value was in two thousand and eighteen. Then it also talks about what the average number was, what the average assessed value in Hackensack was in two thousand and seventeen, and what the average assessed value was in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and pretty much those numbers were in two thousand and seventeen, an average home was assessed at two hundred and forty-one thousand, et cetera. And in two thousand and eighteen, it's assessed at two hundred and forty-five thousand, et cetera. And, uh, what that does, as always, our, you know, our our goal in life is to have our property values increase and have our tax rate decrease at the same time to not see a change in taxes based on the assessment value. We all want our homes in condos, et cetera, to appreciate the value, that's life. Um, but of course, we don't wanna pay more tax on them. And if things stay the same, so now if you, if you start seeing in general that all of the homes and and properties in Hackensack are now becoming more valuable, which is a good thing, then you're gonna see exactly what you saw in that particular letter you received, which is that if things stayed constant, if the budget did not change, which would be remarkable, if it did not change at all from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, based on that new rate, even though the average home increased by about four thousand dollars e- in value, you would receive a reduction in your tax of about forty, let's say forty-one dollars, um, based on the assessment. Now, just looking at it from a a a a optimistic view, but also a realistic view, looking at city and Board of Education and the county, and looking at normally what normally happens or what goals are. We set goals within the city that we, our goal was to keep our increase to two percent or less. And now we're not talking just about our budgeted items, but we're talking about what affects your tax, which is the tax levy. So the tax levy is the amount of money to be raised by taxes. So let's just make an assumption and say, hey, let's assume this is a new tax, this is the new assessed values of of our properties. And let's say that it increased by, the tax levy increased by two percent flat. If that happened, looking at the average home, the projection would be about a hundred and twenty dollars for the year, roughly ten dollars per month. Um, which I think would be a fair evaluation and and a goal that I think is definitely achievable. If you look at what happened last year, the city, part of the municipal tax levy was kept to one point six seven percent. So we were able to achieve under two percent, and we're very proud of that. What affected the city negatively last year is the Board of Education, uh, tax levy increased by over five percent. So last year, that had a rather heavy impact on 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 the taxpayers of the city. We're hoping that the Board of Education is able to keep theirs in line and and perhaps we can come through with two percent or even less. That's always the city's goal. As we have more information, I think the tax office said that we would have more information by the next council meeting, we'll share more information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, deputy.
Um, next is the Main Street Streetscape Phase Two and Phase Three. For the record, the city of Hackensack has applied for grant funding through the New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Project. This streetscape elements were, um, designed to include bricklayers, sidewalks, um, decorative lights, benches, and trees to, for beautification of streets, and in this case, Main Street. Um, the Boswell Engineering Firm, um, applied for the grant in two thousand and sixteen, and we were issued a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, in that amount of two thousand and seventeen, uh, the city made a second request for two more grants for Phase Two and Phase Three. We asked for three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, we received a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two sixty-nine. So for a grand total of three hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. So the acceptance of this, um, by the mayor and council will move that project forward. And we are in conversation to apply for additional grant funding as we do sections of Main Street and bring this up to what we would hope, the complete beautification of Main Street, which is also part of the Main Street Streetscape and also, we're gonna try to roll this in. So when we do the two-way conversion of Main Street, all of this, um, it's kind of like preparing for Thanksgiving dinner, it all comes out at the right time and and looks appropriate and and obviously well serves the, uh, the city.
What is the plan for the sewers?
We're looking right now at the, we got a price of cameras. I'm gonna have a conversation, uh, later contractually enclosed about it, um, to see which direction the mayor and council wanna go with that. But I wanna make sure that we cam- we we camered the, that line almost two years ago. I just wanna make sure through all this redevelopment, that those lines and all those facilities and infrastructure are in good shape before we pave new roads, new sidewalks, and new curbs over the top of that.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Um, next is the walking program. There is a program being offered, um, which is the, um, New Jersey, uh, Masters Running Club that wants to start a mayor's wellness program in the state. And they need a mission statement and an adoption. And basically, they're going to ask people to basically walk or run a hundred miles for this program. And at the end of it, you get, um, a certificate from the mayor, um, and your name printed on the bulletin board in the Recreation Department, and, um, it's also recommended to have it printed in the newspaper. I think, uh, physical health is a great thing, but for me, as the city manager, I don't have available staff that are gonna implement this program. I know that the clerk's office doesn't have that kind of time, I can guarantee you the city manager's office doesn't have this time. I haven't had a chance to speak to Susan in the Health Department, but the problem is, is that when you take this on, someone basically has to make sure that we provide the information and and get all this lined up and right this minute. I don't have my hand raised, I'm not trying to be selfish, but there are just not enough hours in the day right this second for for me to implement that. If this is something that the mayor and council wanna adopt, I will then speak to Susan and see if there's some interest there and they can comply with it. If this is not one of those things, obviously, anybody can voluntarily decide to get out of bed and go walk a hundred miles without, you know, certification from the mayor, no disrespect against our mayor, but, um, but the choice is really up to you folks.
And next. Can we get more, uh, information from him on exactly what is required from the city for this?
Yes, sir.
I'm reading through it, but it's, it basically tells you about the program, but exactly what they need from us to do.
Got it.
All right?
I'll get back to you. Um, next is the Bergen County, um, African-American Committee Resolutions, um, request. Basically, this request is nothing more than a supporting resolution for this program for the MLK statue at the end of University Plaza. They need your folks' support and approval to have one of these, um, namesake stanchions put on the top of the street sign. They have a request through Freeholder Gantz to come up with, um, authorize the street name change, and also, they want a commemorative stamp. And obtaining the stamp, um, cancellation mark from the United States Post Office uh, commemorating the official birthday and celebration of Martin Luther King Junior and the March of Washington, perhaps best known for I Have a Dream speech. The naming of the street of, um, Martin Luther King Junior statue of Fairleigh Dickinson University and Dr. Martin Luther King Way. Um, so if you folks are in support of the resolution, we have a sample one here. The, their action is gonna go after the postmark. And once approved, will go after the, the new, above the the original street sign is the celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King Street Celebration. Um, number nine is the efforts of the fire department and Steve Kleiman coming up with a resolution that allows us to dispose of obsolete, obsolete equipment, uh, no longer needed by the fire department, which basically is expiration of five-inch hose in circumference. Steve, do you have any, uh?
Yeah, bear with me on that one second here.
But I will fill in the details while he's looking. We have two, the City of Hackensack Fire Department wishes to provide Little Ferry Fire Department with twelve lengths of the affirmation supply hose. And we have another whereas, the City of Hackensack Fire Department wishes to provide the remaining thirty-eight lengths of supply hose at no cost to the Virgin Islands Fire Service in their aid for recovery efforts for the United States Virgin Islands. So we have a split with both, we just needed, um.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, I'm just taking a look, Ted, I may need to talk to you, because the resolution that is on the agenda appears to be, um, slightly different from the resolution that I drafted. Um, um, so I just wanna make sure that that's correct. So we may need to amend it at the hearing, so I'll check that out. I'm just looking at it for, on the agenda, and there's some changes, so I need to understand those changes.
Okay.
We'll figure that out in the next.
Okay, uh, number ten is the resolution designate the developer and authorization agreement for Fifty Main Street. You folks were all provided with this, I don't think we need to sort through every nuance of it unless there's some questions about it. Uh, number eleven for me is that I'm happy to report that the Hackensack DPW will commence on pothole details starting tomorrow. Um, because we're starting to get some whoppers, and we know that it's coming, and there's some large ones, so we're gonna start with the big ones first. And we're gonna progress, but, uh, pothole, uh, refills start tomorrow morning, so, um, they have crews lined up and they're gonna start filling them. And the last thing I have, um, number twelve on my list. And the last thing I have, um, number twelve on my list is a discussion from Deputy Mayor Catastreet on reference to Teterboro. Thank you.
Yes, quickly, um, last month in January was the Quarterly Tanac, the Teterboro, um, Aircraft Noise Abatement Committee Meeting, which I attended and represent the city. Uh, so just to give you a little bit of, of an update, um, on some of the discussion we had, I think that two points that are of most interest to us and our residents are, uh, changes to, uh, jet traffic and, uh, changes to noise. Uh, looking at jet traffic, looking at two thousand seventeen numbers compared to two thousand sixteen numbers, jet traffic itself increased by four point one five percent, which equates to fifty-eight hundred, almost six thousand more jet traffic flights in two thousand seventeen than in the prior year. So if you think about that, that's like five hundred flights a month. If it was, you know, totally equal. So there, there has been a substantial increase in, and they project with the economy the way it is and what they see, um, currently, that they expect that to only to continue to grow. We talked a lot about, is there any way to establish thresholds? And, you know, because of the fundings they receive and the fact, you know, that they are in, in conjunction with the FAA, um, everything is managed, of course, very, very, from a safety perspective, through their flight control organization and through their, their, um, uh, the ability that Port Authority has put in the, constrained Port Authority has put in place. But they don't foresee any mechanism in place to limit the jet traffic that's coming into that particular airport. In fact, they say it was a number of years ago, um, but it had exceeded the current volume that we, we see. In other words, it had declined over the years as the economy was not doing well, and now they, they're starting to see that rise again. Uh, as far as noise goes, um, the monitor, uh, the modeling that's done on Prospect Ave actually saw an increase yet again. So, um, the decibel number there on average, remember now, is up to sixty-three point five in the Prospect area of the Medical Center where the tower is. Now, just to give you some perspective, uh, a couple of years ago, when the noise study was done and funded, the decibel number to be included in the noise study was at sixty-five. So Hackensack is getting close, um, to that number, which was considered, again, a threshold of what areas needed to be looked at. I asked a question, while we're getting there, we're creeping up. If we hit sixty-five, will we now become part of that study? Apparently, these studies are only commissioned something like every ten years, so they don't make additions to it. But we're hoping that when the new alternate flight path comes in, that we will see some relief both from a volume perspective and from a noise perspective. Uh, in December, I think I'd asked folks, please continue to call when you see low-flying planes or hear them because we'd kinda fallen off. We were so, you know, I think, uh, there was a big push for that, and then when we saw we were moving forward with a new alternate plan, we kinda fell by the wayside. So we did have a few more calls in January. I was happy to see that, but we need to keep that up. Uh, the FAA has started the environmental study for the new flight path, but you know that there's gonna be other towns that are gonna become critical of that, and we want to see that. Let Hackensack stay consistent. You know, we have, when we hear complaints, voice those complaints. Uh, they need to have that data. We need to be providing that data as well, so I ask folks to continue to provide it. In a nutshell, that was it.
Uh, real quick, and, and my thought actually just got reinforced by Deputy Mayor's comments. You know, I watch a lot of these planes. I work at Hackensack University Medical Center where they fly very close, and I live in the flight path. Just seems to me that they're actually getting lower and lower and lower. And the fact that the planes are now being made to be quieter.
Yes.
But the noise decibels, the decibels are going up shows that they're getting lower and lower and lower. So, I mean, you know, this, that's not a good thing, so. Um, I'll be happy when they, this flight path thing changes, hopefully, and, uh.
I mean, they still have the hundred thousand pound limit in effect at Teterboro, so aircrafts cannot exceed the hundred thousand pound limit and expect to access Teterboro Airport. And, but there still is, you know, a number of folks that are petitioning, you know, air, airliners that are petitioning. Well, right now, everyone, you know, folks that are doing the business jet business are saying, okay, let's make sure we conform, even if we're right under, let's make sure we conform to that hundred thousand pound limit so that our jets can be used in these smaller airports, not just Teterboro, but others. So you're seeing that focus now to stay within the hundred thousand pound limit. And as John mentioned, um, there has been, some of the newer business jets are quieter.
Oh, the Class Bs are definitely quieter.
So, you know, they're, they, the airline, the, the manufacturers are addressing these issues, but we still see, you know, there's a considerable amount of older business jets as well, and certain ones noisier than others, and I do see them flying quite low too, especially, um, but please keep it.
Question is, all this additional, uh, traffic that they're thinking that's gonna be coming our way, do they receive more revenue for that as well?
Should be.
They're, you know, now we're talking about Port Authority.
Right.
I mean.
Somebody's making money for.
Everyone is very quiet when we talk about.
Well, my point, and I'll say it as the mayor of the City of Hackensack, 'cause my job's to protect the citizens, when do the municipalities being, suffering from this get to maybe share a little bit of the profits that they're causing? We're getting the pain and they're, they're not. When do maybe, yeah, put money towards schools, put money towards, uh, air conditioning in the schools, soundproofing the schools, whatever needs to get done.
Well, I think, I do think, I think the Board of Edu, now that we're hitting sixty-three point five at, not at, not at the school, but at the medical center, I think that Hillers has to, you know, again, reach out to them about soundproofing that school. I bring it up, I bring it up all the time.
My wife's a teacher in Hillers, and when she was in the older part of the school, I can tell you, on a summer's day when it was eighty-five degrees out, it'd be ninety degrees to a hundred degrees in the room, and the windows would have to stay closed 'cause you couldn't teach the children because the air traffic was so loud. And so now what happens is you can't teach the children 'cause they're, they're sweating profusely. So, uh, you know, some air conditioning in a school and some soundproofing and new windows could go a long way. So, something we need to look into, but if they're gonna increase tra- air traffic and increase profits, you know, that's a problem for the local municipalities that are surrounding this airport.
Okay, and I think very disturbing, not to belabor the point, but very disturbing, I know folks read that article now that they have done some more research into that crashing.
That wasn't even qualified to be flying a plane.
Person, right, the person that was flying that plane was not licensed to be flying that plane.
Yeah, shouldn't have been flying.
He did not have the required hours, et cetera, to be flying that. Well, now you're having, you know, private industries, these aren't commercial airlines, so it's up to who is. That was very disturbing. Meaning that was very disturbing.
Mayor, that would complete the city manager's.
With that, I need a motion to. Motion, well, I'm gonna open to the public. Everybody gets five minutes, Mr. Uh.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, sorry, three minutes. So, I, I need a motion to open to the public.
Secretary.
Roll call.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Hi.
Councilman Bataglia.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi, anybody would like to speak, please, please come forward and give your name and address to the clerk. You will have three minutes.
My name's Edie Gomick. I live on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, um, Hackensack. If your argument, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. If your argument is that because I have parking downstairs in Cube, then I should be able to use that, then my argument would be that if anyone who lives in my building, if you, if you, um, maintain the same standard, then no one who lives in my building should be able to park on the street. And the point, my point here is that, um, I'm disabled, so I should have the same access as an able-bodied person, okay?
I, I understand, and I agree a hundred percent with that, but there's able-bodied people who sometimes don't have access to parking as well.
And I don't dis- dispute that, but.
You know, parking is, is, is painful for everybody.
Totally agree, but, but you can't use the argument in, in my case, because it's, it's open generally to say it's up to the property manager or the owner to give me access, because you, you, because I have the same access as everyone else in the building. My argument is that for me to have proper access like an average person who, who, who lives in Hackensack, you don't stop the residents in my building saying, you can't park outside.
Let me, let me ask you a question if I may. So there's one, one handicap spot out front, correct?
Right.
What if there were two and they weren't designated? Would that alleviate any of the problem?
I, I, well, quite frankly, I, it would, but, but I, I don't see, to be, to be honest with you, that there's, there's such a need, because I think the purpose of this is not to overcrowd the streets. I think it's genuinely for people who need it.
I agree, I agree.
And I don't, I mean, I'd be grateful for two, but I don't think it's necessary as such personally. I think that spot, okay, if, if you give everyone in the building as an able-bodied person access to use the street with a reasonable expectation, because there's tons of parking, then you should give disabled people the same type of access because we have a greater challenge than the average person. And that's why using the argument of, you know, it's the landlord's responsibility is not the same argument. The, the apples, apples comparison is, if you don't allow me that parking spot because I'm in a wheelchair,
Well, the reason.
Because I live in the building, then you should stop everyone who lives in the building parking on the street.
And, and I agree and I disagree again. My, my reasoning for making my comment about, uh, the building owner is he's supplying you with handicap parking, but he's not supplying you with handicap parking that makes it easily accessible for somebody to get in and out of his building. And I know you're saying that doesn't provide independence for you if you wanna park on the street. I understand that. But, uh, my reason for mentioning the two spots, if that can, you know, again, you said a lot of times there's somebody in that spot that's not designated or, you know, probably isn't using it properly or could be using it illegally. Um, the chances of two spots being filled like that are going to decrease tremendously, and would give you the option to the spots, I think, a lot more if there were two right, right in that area. But that's something we're gonna consider. The, uh, attorney's gonna look into it, all right?
Yeah, and, and that's really the final point I'm making. If you say to me, it's up to the landlord, if you're trying to restrict.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just trying to work something out here, maybe we could work something with him, but.
You've got to apply the same standard to able-bodied people and not discriminate against disabled people, because that's what you're doing by not allowing me to park on the street.
Well, I, I agree and I disagree, because I, I don't disagree, I don't agree with that a hundred percent. And I would never discriminate against somebody, but I don't wanna go back and forth because we surpassed our three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Gomick. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Rudenborg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canashino.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Hi.
Councilman Bataglia.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi, okay.
Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under seven B seven and seven B E of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee, whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack is in the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wish to discuss the following issues. Personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving purchase, lease or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city, mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days or at such a time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
I think Ray is here, um, so we're, we're gonna hear from Labor Council. Depending on how long he takes, I may have some cases to shortly brief you on, but I'll reserve until we see what kinda time we've got.
Personnel, anybody? Nothing? Okay. Madam Clerk? Need a motion to close the executive session?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Rudenborg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canashino.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims. Councilman Bataglia. Mayor LaBras.
Hi, I need a motion to close the council of the hall.
Um, when you're, I thought when you close it, I would, I would speak.
Mm-hmm. I have an offer, I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Rudenborg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canashino.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Hi.
Councilman Bataglia.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi. Steve?
Just to speak briefly, we did meet in closed session to discuss matters of personnel. Also, several litigations were discussed, including the case filed, uh, by the name of the plaintiff Dur- Durardo, is that? Durardo.
Durardo.
Um, Greenman, uh, Sharif, and, um, I'm trying to think. Yeah, I guess those were the three litigations, um, that we talked about.
Okay, good, thank you.